Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 24th, initially, the joint meeting of the Lennox School Committee and the Lennox Select Board. The purpose is to interview and discuss the four applicants to fill the vacancy on the school committee. I will turn it over to Orin to chair this portion of the meeting.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for making the time to fit this in. We're becoming vacancy-filling pros here on the school committee, which is good. And I just want to start by acknowledging, I think we have four really fantastic candidates. I've already sent them a note to this effect, but we will have to choose one, which means not the other three, but frankly, my view is they would all be fantastic, and I will try to get them to run in May if they are not chosen. But we have Richard Burke, Morgan Cooper, Stephanie Kluka, and Scott Sibley. And we'll proceed, as we have in the past, if everyone approves, which is essentially just to ask everyone to leave the room so they're not all here at the same time, but give each candidate five minutes, both to introduce themselves, say anything they might want to say, and then we can ask them a few questions. We can then discuss as we might want, and then this requires a roll-call vote to make a selection. If we don't have a majority, we would drop the lowest person and roll-call again, but hopefully it will proceed. Anyone else has any comments or otherwise before we start? We could take those.
I'll make a super brief comment. About 12 years ago, I was sitting in one of those chairs doing exactly the same thing, asking to be appointed to a vacant seat. So whoever is out there doing it, please don't be nervous. We're really friendly. It's not intimidating, even though we're sitting here. Be yourselves. We're thrilled that we have four candidates.
I thought he was going to say, "So watch out," or "12 years from now." You are still coming to these meetings, everyone. But that's right. All right. And so I think we'll go in alphabetical order, and so we would start with Richard Burke.
We might want to catch the door.
All right, sir. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Burke, and I've lived on Hubbard Street for 40 years. Some of you know me, and many of those who don't know me have at least met me. I'm here because I want to serve on the Lennox School Committee. I have three reasons why I want to serve. There is nothing that affects the values of a community, whether those values be financial or civic or personal, more than the quality of education given to the youngest citizens in the community. Secondly, it is important to do education right. It's very difficult to fix the mistakes. It's expensive. It takes a lot of time, and it's just too hard to do. Number three, it's important to the families that live here. The future of those students is really the futures of those families, and they have a right to a good education. I've spent more than 30 years as a faculty member and in leadership positions in higher education. I'm currently Professor Emeritus of Naval Architecture and Marine Engineering at the Maritime College of the State University of New York. I spent 11 weeks this summer serving as Senior Engineering Training Officer aboard the trending ship Empire Stage Seven during our annual cruise across the North Atlantic. I've also taught at the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, at Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, and at Webb Institute of Naval Architecture. The most important qualification that I have, however, is that I have stood in the front of a classroom of incoming college freshmen and seen the look in their eyes, the fear, the frustration, and the commitment. I've advised students who are struggling. I've advised students who are excelling. I have a well-developed idea of the level of commitment that it takes to be successful, and that commitment is personal, and it's institutional, and it's community, and it starts at the community. Also, I have experience in Lennox Town Government. For some years, I served as a member and then as Chair of the Conservation Commission. I also served on the Finance Committee for two years. So in closing, I promise to do a good job. I care about the outcome, and I ask for your support, and I welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay here, though. We'll hit questions now.
Oh, questions now?
So, floor is open if anyone has any. I'm happy to always start with the generic question, which is observing the schools today in the school committee. What do you see as any particular issues, concerns, things that you would want to focus on that we could be doing better?
I don't have a pet issue. I'm not here because I am upset or angry or convinced that there's something we're doing wrong. I think Lennox, by and large, has done a good job with education over the last, well, during the 40 years that I've lived here. My real concern is to continue that, not to design a new, better machine, but to make this one fly as it, keep flying as it should.
All right.
Great opening remarks. Appreciate it. And I think Orin asked you the question, but you and I probably won't be around 10 years from now, but we hope we are. Where do we see the school 10 years down the road? Where do you think we're going to be? That's a terrific question, and if I knew what A.I. was going to do to the rest of the world, I wouldn't be standing here. I'd be out getting rich. But the fact of the matter is, it's a very confusing world that the kids are facing. And artificial intelligence is changing the way people learn, but it's going to change the work that they do after they finish learning. Well, you never really finish, but this is going to be a difficult time, and we need to think about this a lot. And I've already had issues with this. On sea term, when I was at sea, I would review the grades of the cadets who stood watch during the night, and in reviewing the grades, one cadet had failed his watch during the night because he was on his iPhone during his watch, and you're not supposed to have your phone out on watch. But the thing that got me was that after he failed the watch, the officer told him he was going to fail the watch, he got angry, and he left the engine room. And for the first time in 50 years, I put a cadet on report. And later on, he went to captain's mask, and when he finished that, he came down and he apologized to me. And we had a talk, and the fact of the matter is, the issues of responsibility, of diligence, of knowing what you're supposed to do and being clear that you're going to do it, those are still things that are important in education. They don't have to do with the phone or with A.I. and other stuff. So there's a content here that's not just purely academic.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Could you speak just briefly about the non-college-bound student? I appreciate everything you can bring to the table for the students that are heading towards a higher education. So could you speak to us a little bit about the non-college student and what you think Lennox could do better or continue to do?
One of the things about maritime education is that you not only have to, you know, you have to take calculus and physics and do all that sort of stuff, but you also have to learn how to weld, how to machine, how to do pipe fitting, how to, you know, do electrical work. That's all part of the education that I've been used to. It's what I had to do when I was a student, and it's what we still teach those cadets to do. The thing is, you have to go to college now to be a plumber. I mean, you go to a community college. If you want to be an electrician, you go to a community college. And so some of the classical educational metrics and behaviors are still very important, even if you don't want to do a kind of traditional college career, you want to do something more applied. Applied work is getting really complicated, and so it's important to give them both the mechanical skills, but also the study skills to be able to succeed at that, too. The balancing act is getting harder.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you can send Morgan in. Morgan Cooper?
Do I have to talk into the microphone?
We'll yell it.
Sorry. My name is Morgan. I go by Morgan Seenan because I did get married eight years ago and decided to never change my last name, so I call that my stage name, which is why it's in parentheses after Cooper. I am the General Manager of Pizzeria Boema and Frankie's Restaurante, so I've seen a lot of you many times before. One of my favorite new things as an adult and a parent is volunteering. I came from a family who was very heavy in volunteering my entire childhood. My parents, my mom was a stay-at-home mom. My dad retired when I was eight, so my entire life, all I remember them doing was volunteer work, whether they were on the volunteer fire department, the PTO. My mom was a room mother for 17 years in a row for her four children. They were extremely involved, and anytime there was an issue at the school, my father was the first one in the office. He was always there six minutes after the issue started, because that's how far we lived from the high school in my area. It really molded me into a person that wanted to care about the community from within our family. I moved here 10 years ago and became very heavily involved in the hospitality industry in this area. I worked at Alta Restaurant and Wine Bar for five years and then moved over to work for Molly after the pandemic and having my first child. Once my children became part of the school, I realized that I needed to get more involved. So as much as I have a busy schedule with the restaurants, I became Secretary of the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, last year, and have been trying my best to bring more attention and parents to that matter. I built the website for the CPAC on the Lennox Public Schools page, so if you look at that, that was all built by me, just doing my best with Canva on my computer in the middle of the night after work. I have brought three new members to the CPAC. I believe that brings us up to six, and I am on my way to finding us more with the help of all of my friends in the CPAC. As a special education student myself growing up, it was difficult. The school system is not built for people who are neurodivergent. It's not built for people who can't sit still, and it's not built for people and what they're going through in their brains that might not be the same as everyone else's. I hope to be a voice for those people and for those kids and make it so that students can say how they feel, can talk about that, and we can learn to adapt with the students, rather than making the students always adapt to the school. I think that in the year of 2025, going into 2026, the country as a whole is making great progress towards that, as is our area in Lennox, but I think there's always room for improvement, whether personal improvement, community improvement, and that's my goal, is to improve anything I can get my hands on as much as I can. I have lots of budgeting experience, so I love to look at budgets and be able to separate money into things that make sense. I love to look at different people and what they're bringing to the table, learn from them, and be able to grow as a human being, as a community member, and as just someone who you can lean on if you need to talk about something about your students, about a friend's child. I want to open up and be part of the community that everyone can come to and speak to, and hopefully we can change for the better what you've already started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time for a couple of questions.
So I think it's only fair that I ask the same question.
Go for it.
Where do you see the Lennox school system in 10 years, let's say? What would you like, what would you like it to be in 10 years? Maybe it's a better question.
I think in 10 years, my children will be in the middle and high school, and I would love to see an inclusive area for students to be able to thrive in the areas that they are made for. My son has autism, but he loves numbers. He was doing multiplication tables in his pack-and-play as a two-year-old when he couldn't speak any other words. He just memorized multiplication tables from a song, and he now is starting to tell me that colors have numbers, numbers have colors, and I think that he's someone who will thrive in math. I'd love to see in 10 years that the school take their strengths and work with them and be able to help them grow in what they're good at and not just general.
Yes. Okay, Morgan, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask what Kim asked earlier. There are many different types of students in the school, and we're not just preparing kids to go to college, but we're preparing kids to go out into the world. What do you see us serving the vocational students? How do you see that fitting into everything here at Lennox?
I think that I bring a different view on college than most as someone who did not attend. I went straight from high school into the restaurant industry and decided, this is where I want to be, making people's experience in life more fun and more pleasurable, and now I would like to bring that experience to kids and be able to show them there's so many other avenues to go, to pick something you're passionate about and run with it. That's my hope for every kid. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You send Steph in?
I definitely will. Where are we sitting?
Right here.
Seat right here?
No, no, you have to stand at the microphone.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hi. Introductions? Is that where we're starting? Okay. All right. I'm Stephanie Kluka. I'm a mom of three children in the Lennox schools. Two of my children are adopted, and two of them are on IEPs. This gives me a personal perspective on both the strengths and the challenges within our district. I grew up in Berkshire County. I moved back in 2015 after the birth of our son. I have lived in Lennox since 2019. Our family is deeply rooted in service, from work volunteering at the serious fun camps started by Paul Newman, coaching youth sports, and helping at local events. My husband also serves as a volunteer firefighter, so we are deeply ingrained in giving back. I believe schools are at the heart of our community, and I would be honored to help strengthen that connection on the school committee. Lennox Public Schools have a well-earned reputation for academic excellence, and I would be honored to contribute to sustaining and strengthening that tradition. As a member of the Lennox School Committee, my vision would be to ensure that every student has access to an excellent and well-rounded education that prepares them, not only academically, but also socially and emotionally, for success in a rapidly changing world. I believe in supporting strong academics, innovative programs, and inclusive practices while maintaining the small community values that make Lennox truly special. My priorities include, sorry, am I done? Oh, sorry. Thought I heard something. Priorities would include strengthening the relationship between school and families. Above all, I would like every decision that I would make, as well as the committee, to hopefully support, to reflect what is best for the students and overall their futures. I'm excited about the possibility of serving and working together to keep Lennox schools strong, inclusive, and forward-looking.
Question time.
Do it again.
Do it again.
I just want to ask the same question for all the candidates. So Stephanie, where do you see the Lennox schools, or where would you like to see the Lennox school system in 10 years from now?
10 years?
Oh, that's a long time.
I understand. I'm trying to think of where my, trying to think of where my kids will be in 10 years, and that's just mind-blowing. So 10 years. I really hope that we can be on the forefront of some technology. I think technology is coming down the pipeline. I think that we have to be creative with how we embrace it. I'm also a teacher. I worked out in Great Barrington, so it's something that we are also trying to juggle and manage while we're there, but I would like to see us hopefully lead that, if not in the state, but like at least for Berkshire County. I think that's something that's completely tangible and we could do.
And then, not all students are college-bound students.
Correct.
So what do you see happening with those students?
So I would love to work within the community, right? I mean, so for kids that are college-bound, how can we partner with the schools that we have that are existing? How could we even partner with local businesses for these kids to take on internships, you know? We want to get these kids, the auto mechanics, the electricians, the plumbers, we want to get them back in our community. There's a shortage of these jobs that are available, right? So I also do think that we have resources in the community to get them these opportunities. So I think it's just a matter of creative networking and, you know, using what we have in our corner.
As a parent of many children in the schools, you surely have all sorts of opinions about how things are going now. Do you have any particular areas you would want to focus on yourself as a member of the committee, or that, you know, you see as places we could really?
That was actually kind of one of my questions. I don't know if we're allowed questions, but was kind of like, how would you envision the new person coming in and like what subcommittee would they focus on? And does that go with like where their area of expertise or desire or passions? So just my background, I've been in special ed now since 2008, so in terms of like my bread and butter in a school district would be special ed. As I mentioned, two of my children are on IEPs, one with some pretty more moderate needs, I wouldn't say severe. I would love to see some growth in that area, particularly not, no offense, but some growth in the area of including our children with special needs and educating all of the teachers and people that are involved in making the decisions, what that looks like.
And to answer your question, we all just see what we want to do, and it usually pretty much works out.
All right. Great.
And then the new person gets stuck with whatever is left at the end.
Okay. We get the short straw.
As long as you understand that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Cool. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. How are you? Am I just supposed to start? My name is Scott Sibley. I'm a lifelong resident in Lennox, recently retired. I am a member of the Lennox Police Department doing traffic details for almost the last 40 years. I've coached since 2004 at Lennox High School, various sports, most recently soccer, right now in the fall. I decided to put my name in the hat for this, is being recently retired. My last child is a senior in high school, so I put four kids through school. Figured now is a good time, just so I could look at everything with an open mind and not be thinking possibly how something might affect my own child, but almost, I believe there's close to like 780 of them in the school system, so just look at everything with an open mind and do what's in the best interest of all the students and also the town itself as a whole. I do have like a background in criminal justice. Like I said, with, between the police department, I also worked at the Massachusetts Trial Courts for just shy of 20 years. I also did security in the past at General Electric when I was much younger, but, you know, I've just, my coaching, I think, maybe gives me a little bit different perspective. I know there's a lot to this job, a lot that I don't even, could probably not even fathom, but I am willing to learn and put the time in and be committed to it. But I do think possibly coaching, and for coaching for the amount of time that I have, that I maybe see a little bit of a different perspective, like with my athletes, they come to me as a coach, sometimes a father, sometimes a psychiatrist, EMT at times. Kids open up, they kind of trust me and respect me, so sometimes it's a little overwhelming, but at the same time, it makes you feel pretty good. But, just trying to think, you know, I do have some experience with contracts. When I worked at Switzer Kimberly-Clark for 15 years, I was on the executive committee down there on the union for just shy of 12. I went through three different contract negotiations. I've handled grievances as the chief shop steward. I've been to arbitration hearings, kind of, I'm to the age now where I've kind of seen a lot and done a lot, and I just had a little more time now where I think this is something I could commit to and watch the school keep progressing. I think right now we have a good administration, and we're kind of solidified a little bit more maybe than we have been a handful or so years ago, where we, every time turned around, seemed like somebody different was there. But just myself, I just really think that, you know, I could, like I said, bring a different perspective, work well with the other members of the board. I think we all have different careers, so it's good to have 12 or 14 different sets of eyes to deal with things. I would kind of like to maybe bring up some suggestions on the board if I'm chosen. I have seen some things that I think maybe could be maybe addressed a little bit, but I think overall as a whole, that it's a very, actually two very good boards, the Select Board and the School Board, and I know each board puts a lot of time and energy and effort into all your jobs, and I appreciate it. That's pretty much me in a nutshell, I guess. I've got, like I said, four children, and I do live on Housatonic Street, and I didn't know if I had to make that public since it's on live, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott.
So I asked the other candidates, and I'll ask you, where do you see the school, Lennox school system in 10 years from now? Well, I went through the Lennox school system. I heard all about regionalization when I was in school in the 70s and 80s, and it never happened, and we survived, and I think the school has continually progressed. I honestly hope in another 10 years that it's better than it is, because eventually sometime I'll probably have grandchildren coming through the school system and, excuse me? Like you. Yes, yes. But I do see the school system continuing to get better. I think we do have, like I said, very good administration in there right now. Hopefully, everybody sticks around for a while. That's one thing, like a few ideas I have, like teacher retention, because it seems like every school in Berkshire County has the effect where people are bouncing around, and I think the kids need stability, and if there's a way that we can keep teachers there, I think it helps them tremendously. But I do, thank you.
Scott, I've got one more question. Not every student in a school is college-bound, so what do you see Lennox doing or the community in general doing to help those students who may be picking another track?
Well, I think school choice actually is a big thing. I know we have students that go to Teconic, some go to Monument for the Trades. I think that students that decide not to go the college route still have a good chance of being successful in life. I know some that haven't and are doing just fine. I won't name names, but I know some are only out of school five or six years and own an electric company.
Not every student in the school is college bound. So what do you see Lennox doing or the community in general doing to help those students who may be picking another track?
Well, I think school choice actually is a big thing. I know we have students that go to Teconic, some go to Monument for the Trades. I think that students that decide not to go to the college route still have a good chance of being successful in life. I know some that haven't and are doing just fine. I won't name names, but I know some are only out of school five or six years and own an electric companies and businesses and just doing very well for themselves. And, you know, an education is great, but for some it's just, that's not, they're better with their hands. And, I mean, I know we have quite a few students that actually go into the military as well, which is a great career. So there are avenues out there. I think the school does a good job with their guidance department, placing kids where they think they'll be most beneficial after they get out of school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If you just, you let that, you can ask them to just stick around for a couple minutes.
Okay.
If you should be able. Thank you.
All right. Well, those are the candidates. If anyone has reactions, thoughts, other questions for us to think about ourselves now would be the time.
I guess, because I think we should feel free to say whatever we feel. I mean, this is an important decision. They're all very impressed. I think you wouldn't go wrong in your committee with any of them. With my arm around my good buddy here, I, this is, there's no way to say this, it doesn't sound ageist, but I thought that the folks with younger kids in the school seem pretty tuned in to what's happening at the school. I really liked the answers about both special education and approach to vocational education following school and trying to involve community business and things like that. So I know that probably points to a couple, but I'll just throw that out.
I agree with you. I like the idea of having some young, new initiative. I like the idea of having a candidate that has students in the school. Special ed is near and dear to me as well. And I think that we do a good job. I think I do believe that we could do better, you know, in the Lennox schools with special ed. And one of the candidates, a couple of them, you know, a couple, both spoke pretty eloquently to that. But I feel like one of the candidates, I believe with her educational background, it kind of just kind of one-upped me a little bit, leaning more towards that candidate with the educational background as well as the passion for the non-typical student and the special ed kids. I think that she could come in kind of hitting the ground running with a little bit of the educational knowledge, you know. And, you know, the other candidate who works very closely with the parent advisory, special ed parent advisory council is extremely passionate as well. And I think she does a great job on that council. But I'm kind of leaning more towards the other candidate. Also, along with the passion that they both have, I'm leaning more towards the one that also could bring to the table the educational piece as a teacher.
Sir? I mean, I look at these two gentlemen, and I see an excellent high school because of them. I don't know how much more excellent it can get as far as academics go. I think you guys are doing a wonderful job, but with, of course, your board. What I don't always see, although most of them voiced it, is the kid that pounds nails in the summer, the kid that turns wrenches. And I think that that's, for me anyway, that's going to be my determining factor on who I look at. We do have resources within the county to help these, to help these folks, but I don't know how much advocacy we have within our group, your group, and the town. I mean, I had two grandchildren, one graduated two years ago, one's graduating this year. I can't say that they could have gotten a better education anywhere around here. I mean, it's absolutely excellent. But I see some of their contemporaries who have struggled. And I think if they had a mentor or somebody to push them in another direction, it would have been more beneficial on their part. So you managed to get four excellent candidates. I hope they all run for school committee at some point. I would love to have all of them on. My, my choice is going to be based on somebody who actually worked blue collar. Thank you.
I was going to say, I was very impressed with one candidate's, you know, knowledge of the 30,000-foot observation of what education does, not only in the community, but, you know, how it affects the town, and that it's a personal, institutional, and community endeavor. And I want to say I was very, also very happy to see two candidates call out AI and the importance of us facing that. And I give kudos to Dr. Collins for jumping on board the AI train and, you know, that you guys are going to grab the bull by the horns and you're going to attack this, because this is going to be critical. It's absolutely going to be foundational for the next 10 years. And as Dave said, you know, it's still really important that we have people who are going to be able to turn the lights on and make sure that the water flows and all of that. And having worked at Mass Hire and worked in those programs to get high school students to do these pathways, it's going to be critically important to this region and education. So there's some competing priorities here. And like I said, or like you guys said, all four of these candidates are great. I hope they all run for school committee in the spring, but we've got some good choices tonight.
Right.
Of course, with my reaction, I find myself agreeing with everybody. I think both the younger, the folks with younger kids in the schools, obviously, a sort of very robust day-to-day engagement with all of these issues. I also think somebody with like a very high level view and also just who has experience in town government is actually very valuable. My one bias on sort of vacancy filling tends to be, it's like the, the steady, whatever you call it, placeholder isn't the right term, but it's the person who wants to constructively help hold things in good stead to the next election. And so that's something I think I definitely especially value.
I want to just go back to one thing that Dave said. I wanted to point out that one of the candidates, you know, that I'm leaning towards with the educational background as well as the passion for special education. She did take the time to mention all of those resources that we have here locally and how we should utilize those resources. So I don't want that to escape, you know, us as well. She kind of hit all of those different areas. I think of everything that I'm hearing from everybody, and that was one of the things that she said that she would want to see is for us to be able to reach out and utilize the resources that we have in our own community, our businesses. I felt like she spoke eloquently to that, and I could, I could see her passion when she was speaking to that. So I agree with you. I think that's an important piece.
I think to play devil's advocate a little bit for the candidate with the education background. I don't know if we've ever had a teacher on the school committee in recent years, and I admittedly have some concerns about that dynamic, given that it's such a small county. Their MTA rep will likely be the same rep that we use here. Sorry, I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
It's a good point. I thought about that myself. And I was thinking of what happens during LEA negotiations, for example. It's a different district, but you're right. Globally, it's the same. I can remember back in my term, there was a member of the school, not a teacher, but a union member of the school on our school committee, and they would, you know, simply recuse themselves from particular things. There were plenty of school committee members available to negotiate union contracts, so that I don't recall it ever being a problematic. And sometimes to those with higher up thoughts, it was helpful to hear, whoa, today at school, you didn't see how that went. You know, here's what I saw with the buses or, you know, with the athletics or something. So I think it's a really good point that you raise. My own experience is that it wasn't an issue for someone to recuse themselves when necessary.
And that was within our own school district?
Yes.
This person is outside.
And the other thing, you know, just anecdotally, I signed up for the school committee when my kids were at Morris, and I'm not saying everybody's going to be like this, but they went all the way through the school system, and I loved being part of Lennox's volunteer group, so here I am. You know, you start out doing it, and I think most people, despite it being difficult, fall in love with the idea of trying to help this community. It's a wonderful community.
Yep. I think also, and actually Ms. Kuku raised this question. Right now, our subcommittee vacancy is on HR. I think if we had a teacher in the area join the committee, we would probably shuffle somebody else onto HR, because we are doing negotiations this year and have that person serve elsewhere.
How do you folks feel? Because I feel like we're sitting at this table, I don't want to control the conversation. It really needs to be for you folks to get to express your opinions.
I'm agreeing with what Kim is saying. I think that the educational background will be helpful. I think when I came on, I didn't have that, and it was a lot for me to learn in the beginning. I think it'll be helpful, like you said, hit the ground running because she has the knowledge. She also obviously has the passion.
I think it's also really nice to have, like, it can be nice to have someone on, you know, in contract negotiation. It's almost kind of on the adversarial side, but we're all trying to work together, right? But also someone that can like explain sometimes some of the insights of how, like, I'm not a teacher. I don't necessarily, I can't put myself directly in their shoes to have someone on the school committee. Like, how, how does that feel to you? Do you, you explain to me like why we're getting such friction in this area? Like, they can provide that insight. And I think the, I'm not entirely sure the overlap between CPAC and the school committee. And I don't know if there's any how often there'd be a kind of tension there between those kind of dual roles. Though certainly it sounds like having a strong presence on CPAC and someone that's really advocating to grow that advisory committee, it's kind of a nice thing to have. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to say again, I thought all four candidates were great, and I thought they all presented very well tonight also. I guess my thoughts are also leaning towards, you know, education and people's experience with education. And I think we really have two great candidates that have, you know, a wealth of knowledge in both of those areas. And on one hand, you know, we have somebody who's seen both private and public universities and also working in a military setting, also teaching, you know, vocational training, you know, and I think that that knowledge and like we all had said here, kind of that 30,000-foot view is an interesting perspective that one we should all take into consideration. But also to what everybody else has been saying too about, you know, another candidate who has, you know, not just experience in the classroom, is currently in the classroom, you know, working with special education and also very focused on all avenues that are available for all students, which is something that this committee talks about regularly, and how do we continue to make that, you know, a priority moving forward? I honestly feel both of the candidates that I'm referring to would be excellent in that in that area.
I'm just excited that there's four candidates. That speaks volumes for where we're at. That wouldn't, hasn't, and didn't for a while happen. So I'm, that kind of gives me hope for the future, you know? I'm excited that there's four people out there that want this position, so.
Yeah, I think that's, I felt like going back to last spring's town meeting and, you know, having recently, you folks recently extending Dr. Collins and, you know, the transparency with which you helped us in the budget presentations and everything. I feel that the, whatever 10 years ago was imagined as this like Chinese wall between town and then and school has really softened, and I think people are working much better together. Dr. Collins, Orin, the whole committee, I think you're all helping to do that. And it's, I think it's testament to that, that you've got four good candidates.
All right.
One more.
Yeah, please.
I don't want to sound like the skunk at the lawn party. But I also have another thought, and that is that all of you on the school committee, I assume, have a bachelor's, master's, or doctorate? No? Okay, that is wrong. Because I'd like to see a cross-section of the town represented, and they don't necessarily have to have an advanced degree in order to be a member of the school committee. And I say that because unfortunately, we don't get a lot of people who don't have those credentials wanting to run for school committee or even select them. And I think a good cross-section of the town could be, should be represented by people who were thinkers, hard workers, residents of the community, who gave their heart and soul for their children in the school system, for the rest of the community, worked jobs, and volunteered, were on various committees and so forth. So I'm wanting to see a good cross-representation of other folks as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else? All right. I guess we will proceed to roll call vote. Alphabetically first, typically I would go last in a roll call vote. And so that would start with Mike Dupont.
Michael Dupont, Dick Burman.
Kim Graham.
Kim Graham.
Megan Kirby.
Megan Kirby, Dick Burman.
Jason Messenger.
Jason Messenger, Stephanie.
Kukka. Kim Winger.
Kimberly Winger, Stephanie Kukka.
And Orin Cass, Dick Burke, which leaves it in the hands of the select board. But I think as we've said, obviously, there's a lot of support, and we are certainly very comfortable passing it over for your half of the roll call.
So you're three and three right now?
Sorry?
Are you three and three right now?
Yes.
Thanks.
I have been prepared an alphabetical list of the select board. Don't you know what your alphabetical order is?
How about we just go?
All right.
Dick Burke, Scott Sibley.
Neil Maximilian, Stephanie Kukka.
Max Scherff, Stephanie Kukka.
Eric Duffins, Dick Burke.
Sibley and Dick Burke.
All right. Well, even more remarkably, we now have 5-5-1. We drop Mr. Sibley, and with permission of the group, I would just come back to you unless everybody, unless anyone else wants to change. Dick Burke. All right. Then Mr. Burke will be joining us for the remainder of the year. I don't believe we have any other business. All right. Well, then I guess we take a, oh?
Jay, did you resolve the issue of term?
Term is resolved for school committee.
It is.
They serve until pursuant to N41, section 11, I believe. They serve until next town.
Right. That's what I recall for me, is that they serve until the following spring.
It was a pleasure. Keep up.
All right. Well, then I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn to our meeting of select board and school committee?
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally, I kind of lost track.
Someone needs to inform. Oh, by the way, because I remember they had, who was our clerk 12 years ago? They swore me away.
It's called.
Yes. I still have it there.
All right. Guess on that order, we will call to order the regular school committee. Announcements from the chair. We, I'd like to thank everyone in the town for their continued patience as the pavement continues downtown. It should be wrapping up soon, but it looks great.
I think we should be wrapped up, Max, probably Tuesday, whether it's happening. That's what Billy, Mr. Superintendent, got from this afternoon, so.
Wonderful.
Just a couple more days of a little inconvenience, but work's going well. We'll try to get out of everyone's way as soon as we can and leave a good product.
And the calls and the emails have been going out, both at the end of the day and first thing the next morning, so hopefully people are aware.
Oh, yeah, they've been going out. Yes, yes, they have. That's a good thing, though. Apple Squeeze is coming up this weekend, and then on an exciting note, we have settled on the new police chief, which will be Mike L. Smith.
Mark.
Mark, sorry, Mark.
No, that's okay.
Another Mark Smith.
Yes.
We have three, three.
That's three in town.
Three Mark Smiths? Well, Mark Smith, not closed. Mark Smith would be great. Thank you. Mark Smith would please chief.
There we go. Anyone else have any announcements? Yes, sir?
I do. We had the Gold Star family dedication this weekend, and I just wanted to make one comment because they seemed to got overlooked. But anyway, our emergency management personnel, especially the police, it was put up on the bulletin board, detail for traffic duty and so forth for that, and all four people who volunteered for, for what the, is there such a word? Is foregone, foregone what? Whatever.
It is now.
Volunteered, volunteered for no pay to do, to do the police work, and the firemen did the same thing.
Well, they did.
Yes. They could have got a hundred bucks an hour, a detailed pay, if they, they said, no, this was more important. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yes, yeah. It was great. Well done event.
I should also add to some of the sidewalk work that was done right in front of the monument, along the street there. DPW had pitched in sometime in June or July, I would say, a little early on, just to repair some of those panels, but the town did that work, and you can thank Billy and his group from DPW being able to get out there and do all the staging to get ready to put in that monument. So, everybody pitched in, and it's always good events to have in town.
It is. It just shows the commitment the town makes to things like that, especially our police and fire, and, you know, it's just been wonderful. So, thank you, guys, again. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we will move to citizens' open forum, where Lennox are welcome to address the board. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, I'm Kate McDelty, of mine, Ten Post Road. And I'll try to be really quick, because that was quite long. First, I guess, a little bit of a Penrose update. The last time I mentioned something about it, you didn't have the cameras rolling. And it's important for people to know that all in all, we had 381 applicants for the affordable housing at The Forge by Penrose. 184 were regional preference, so from the 18 towns that were included with Lennox in that aspect of things. And then 23 that were designated as specifically Lennox. And I have taken calls from people who say, oh, my number's jumping around. Well, some of that is partly due to the fact that it's going, it has gone through with this kind of vetting process in terms of checking all the background data that was submitted. And so they're down to whatever the numbers are now. And I think Mary Beth probably knows as well as I do that there's been a real effort around town to find a spot where the Penrose folks could actually meet one-on-one with these applicants and try to work out, you know, the housing with them. Do they need to be on first floor? What other issues come to mind? And that's been ongoing. Apparently, they're going to be in the community center, and supposedly, I just talked to Shannon this morning, I ran into her in Town Hall, Shannon, who is the community center director, and she indicated that they think they'll be in and begin to start the process next week. So, that's great news for everybody. A lot of people are waiting. I guess there have been things on, folks who do Facebook saying, hey, what's happening? And what's happening is they've been trying to find a spot in town to do these private interviews with people. The other thing is that I want to make sure that people know that we also have an opening on the Affordable Housing Trust, and that is a Board of Selectmen appointment. I don't think we're ready to do that yet, but I've been asking around, we've got three, three or so people that I've talked, well, one I've talked to and two I plan to meet with next week, and then someone emailed me today with a couple more names. So, I'm sitting down and trying to give these people an idea of why they would like to be on the Affordable Housing Trust, which is the question that you asked the last time I was here.
CBC.
Are you guys doing?
He was asking me if he thought.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. So, basically, why? It's because there's a housing crisis in Massachusetts, and the Boston Globe were in this in their editorial section of Sunday's paper. Massachusetts is in a housing crisis, and mostly all of the towns and communities in this area know that. The baby boomers are looking to downsize, there's not much churn in the market, there are cash payments for houses, we have a lot of second homeowners, we're losing houses that are becoming short-term rentals. We're up against it here. It's like trying to catch up with a freight train. So, we're looking for new energy, new interests, and the next group of people who will take the trust into the future and make more plans. I actually probably should put the Affordable Housing Trust on in the future agenda, and then I can talk more about the things that we have been doing actively as a trust this past year and previous years. So, I will do that and not hold you up anymore. But we do have an opening, and we would like to have people from the community come forward who have ideas, or, you know, who'd just like to talk about housing issues, and hopefully the Board of Selectmen in the next month or so, you can actually make an appointment. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the consent agenda. Okay, Mr. Chair, this is reasonably long, but bear with me. First, we have a special license request for a one-day wine and malt beverages only liquor license submitted by Lena Shatini for Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Lennox Village for the Apple Squeeze. Next, we have a special license request for one-day wine and malt beverages only liquor license submitted by Jaclyn Donovan for Tuesday, September 30th, from 10:00 to 5:00 at Ventford Hall for a members' party. Bear with me as I get through this one. We have a special license request for one-day all alcohol liquor license submitted by Lorena Astrid Ojeda Vrestudyay. I hope that was close.
That's very good, Neil. I think that's good.
I think that's excellent.
Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 to 5:00 at Ventford Hall for a members' party. Okay. Some of these are overlapping dates, but we're not. Fourth, we have a vote to classify the position of Labor Counsel for the Town of Lennox as a special municipal employee of the Town of Lennox for purposes of Mass General Laws Chapter 268. The town is engaged to services of Merrick O'Connell to serve as Labor Counsel for the town, be able to handle any employment and labor-related matters. KP Law remains as the general counsel for the town. Special municipal employee status under Mass General Law 268A runs with the position, not the person in the position. This is a procedural formality. The hourly rate that they're paid is competitive with KP Law. Next, we have an appointment of Kevin Mitz to the Community Preservation Committee, filling the vacancy of Christopher Fenton. Jay, you have a note here, and I'll, you noted whether it's unclear whether he serves for full term or is a new three-year term or just until the finish of the term? I think with appointments, it becomes a full term when we appoint.
Yes. I was going to say, we tried to research it, we're kind of silent on it, which means we should probably figure out.
Elected positions.
We'll be in this ship again.
I think if we have to codify in the future, elected positions, I think, go to the following election. Appointments, we appoint the full term where vacancy comes.
Absolutely sense, yes.
I agree, that's the way we've always seen it.
Yes. Okay. So, I won't read the explanation here, because the next one is appointment of.
Scooby, Neil, Mary, you might want to hold it so Mary Beth can.
Hold that. I'm going to have to.
Understood. We have, the next item is an appointment of Richard Gregg to the Historical Commission, filling the vacancy of Gene Cheg, who is now an alternate member. And then finally, motion to approve extending slash constructing new sidewalk on the west side of Main Street from the corner of Cliffwood to the corner of Greenwood.
Neil, I can explain that.
I can, but go ahead, Ed.
We've been, town's been looking at this for quite a while, to put a sidewalk up the left-hand side of Main Street, Churchill, if you will. The intent is, because people walk up to go to Kennedy Park, you get to the top of the hill, and you have to scurry across the street to get there. This way it'll be a first step to get the sidewalk from Cliffwood Street to Greenwood Street, and then you have to go up the stairs and across into Kennedy Park, so you don't have to cross the road. I think the second part of that project will be to do, address those stairs. You know, it'd probably be a good community preservation project or some other thing, but make those stairs better.
A little safer. Probably not, not a.
So, this is kind of a two-part thing, but.
No, it's well-needed. As you know, I drive, I exit from that intersection of Main and Greenwood multiple times a day. People are coming across the road there. We obviously have the issue of the traffic coming down the hill that's sometimes going a little faster than they should, but there's not much visibility, so for people in the town to get up to there without having to go across, like you said. So, we had a couple, sorry, this is your job.
I don't, yes, we have two votes going on. Vote on the agenda minus the holds.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve it.
You have to recuse yourself from the warning.
This is minus the hold.
Yeah, minus A and E.
I will move that we approve the consent agenda minus item A and item E.
Start it.
All in favor? Aye. All right, item A, Ed, you have a vote.
Yeah, I had a question about that. This is for the Apple Squeeze. A, is there any indication of where they're going to be? Who this person is and where it's going to be in town? And secondly, I'm just worried about the Apple Squeeze. Last year, we had one vendor selling beer, and we had that one back again. Now, we got wine this year. Is this going to be an ongoing thing where all of a sudden we're going to have a half a dozen places around town selling? I know one person last year asked about alcohol, liquor, and we didn't do that, they had to go on private property, they did. But I'm just, is this starting a slippery slope where it's turning into something the Apple Squeeze never was? So, just my two comments.
It's a bell come, because if you remember, there was a year when it was in the parking lot behind.
Joe's World.
Joe's. For a while, it was like a beer garden area.
Yeah.
And then one year, I believe, we put it right in the middle of the road of the monument. That was awkward.
Yeah.
But we've, we've had a contained in the past, so.
With this, we don't even have any information even where it is?
The paperwork just says downtown Lennox. I'm, this is an assumption. I don't know if Deanna, you know, handles these for the most part, and I don't have a lot of notes on it. The paperwork otherwise is all in order. I'm assuming it's in conjunction with the chamber as to what their location will be.
But that's all around town.
Could be. It says downtown Lennox. It's all.
So, we could approve it, subject to.
Knowing exactly where it is.
Knowing where it is, and you get the approval from the town manager.
And just as an aside, we want to, next year, have four places. I want you to think about that. I know we're not going to act on it tonight, but we need to.
You're right. Yeah, we can do that.
I think definitely, I, contained area, I believe that, you know, they've done it in a parking lot area, last year at Antone, did it in an area where they, I think they had it roped off, and there were bracelets, et cetera, so.
That's a good point.
Yes.
You need to control it, yeah.
It should be, because, you know, zillions of kids.
Yeah. Kind of have a good control.
Well, I'm going to just. May I revise the motion to say, Part A, the consent agenda, would be moved to approve the license for one-day wine and malt submitted by Lena Shatini for Saturday, September 10 to 5:00 in the Lennox Village, subject to clarification of location by town manager. Clarification and approval of location by town manager.
If you want to, I'm going to vote against it anyway, but it's part of my vote, so it doesn't, I'm worried about it.
Well.
Or it could be, you know. So, I mean, we can, we can expand that by instructing the town manager to make sure it's in a controlled atmosphere, controlled area, and that they also have a detailed policeman monitoring the alcohol, or the patrons using it.
A detailed policeman?
We could. I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, no.
But it's putting some real restrictions on them, you know, it comes into their bracket. Maybe they wouldn't do it. I don't know. It's hard. So, the tough thing is, the tough thing is the timing, right? We don't have time. Ideally, I'd like to hear from the chamber, where are all the locations that might be serving alcohol, and how are they age-controlled and contained, right? Because you can't tell, for example, if they're a bottle shop, not to sell within their store, but we don't know if this is a place that serves.
Wine tasting or just a wine bottle, you get, I don't know what it is. Be a little more information would be nice.
But we don't really have the time to evaluate it.
Well, they have time, because this came up a month ago. But did it get on our agenda a month ago, or no? And what did we do? I believe Deanna had some conversations with him about what I said, and I don't know where it went, or if she was going to get more information from the chamber. I don't know what transpired.
So, we just don't have clarification on location, and we don't have a police-controlled situation, and we don't know where it went?
But we have antimony doing it, and we don't have a policeman there, so that'd be unfair to do.
Right.
Yeah, I know. I can modify that to say that they supply somebody to make sure that there's no underage drinking and so forth. They're all TIPS-certified supposedly.
Right.
Oh, they are.
Definitely are.
Okay, which should limit underage kids, other than people walking in and buying somebody for an underage kid. I'm just trying to make a statement, and I think it's, we're going in the wrong direction. Well, it's getting away from the old original Apple Squeeze, that's.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry. No, you're right. It used to feel, it used to feel like cider and apples and pies and.
Yeah.
Candy apples, all my good stuff. Yeah, I mean, I think if we can get the location secured to the town manager, that would go along, go along the way to approving this.
I will, I'll also, I'll touch with Deanna if I need to be, but I can find out, and I can also call Sarah at the chamber to get some more information. There, even though the local control, we have local control over one-day licenses, your commentary about the controlled area with the wristbands, all that generally applies to any pouring. So, if they're TIPS-certified, they should know that they have to do that, but I can't say that I have them. Again, this is Deanna handles it, so I'll dig into it a little for you.
Well, how do we get past this one? I don't want to be unnecessarily unfair.
We got, we got. I mean, I'll be fine. We'll go with it, but we got to make sure we know some of the details.
And then we need to make a point to discuss the proliferation of any alcohol sales to multiple, multiple booths that's been happening at Apple Squeeze, and, you know, I'm not trying to be a fuddy-duddy about it, but it seems like it's becoming, everyone just assumes they're going to do it.
It's Apple Squeeze, not Oktoberfest.
All right, so did my.
I second, yeah, I second that.
Okay, so I think we can more amend the motion.
I think so, too.
What's that, I second that?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then E.
I will move to appoint Kevin Mitz to the Community Preservation Committee, noting that Mary Beth will recuse herself from this vote. Start it.
All in favor? Aye.
Stand.
It's kind of their job.
Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
On to general business. Yes.
Did you get the, did we just do the hold?
We did.
So you have to do everything else?
We did that first.
We did everything.
We did everything minus the holds.
Terrible, no.
We did everything minus A and E.
Who's this guy?
When's she coming back?
Then, sequence, we voted on A after much discussion and then E, we handed pretty quickly, just so Mary Beth could abstain.
Oh, yes.
So we're through with consent agenda.
Thank you, sorry.
Which brings us to general business for a, we have to open a public hearing for Twenty-One Husatonic LLC Doing Businesses Twenty-One Husatonic, located at Twenty-One Husatonic, that seeks to amend their annual all alcohol restaurant liquor license, a change of manager of record to Scott Short.
Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing for Twenty-One Husatonic LLC Doing Businesses Twenty-One Husatonic, located at Twenty-One Husatonic Street, requesting to amend their annual all alcohol restaurant liquor license with a change of manager of record to Scott Short.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't see anyone here from that.
Scott, was anybody up there?
Did he? Did he? Just folks I was with.
Okay. Only a special from Kim Williams, I don't have any concerns myself.
The paperwork is the way, it's all in order and everything.
Yes, yes.
This is the general manager.
Any concerns from anyone?
No.
Wonderful.
The, I would, Mr. Chair, I move to, no, we're gonna vote and then we'll close.
Uh, no, closer.
Close, yeah.
Oh, sorry. So I move to close the public hearing and to approve the request by Twenty-One LLC Doing Businesses Twenty-One Husatonic, located at Twenty-One Husatonic Street, to amend their annual all alcohol restaurant liquor license manager of record to Scott Short.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Managed to get that all in one breath.
Go to the wall, then.
You're too, you're too, you're too, Neil, the pronunciation of that.
Yes, indeed.
That's smooth, yeah.
Now onto our second public hearing, which is Mazzio's Italian Deli LLC Doing Businesses Mazzio's Italian Deli, seeking to amend their annual wine and malt package store license, pledge of license.
Is that the correct term, Jake?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, term of art in G L one thirty-eight.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing for Mazzio's Italian Deli LLC Doing Businesses Mazzio's Italian Deli, seeking to amend their annual wine and malt package store license to include a pledge of license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I see no one here from Mazzio's either, but.
How is this, what is, what is a pledge of license?
Yeah, what is this?
So, Jake can explain, this is essentially their fulfilling their requirements to the Alcohol Commission for collateral that's pledged as part of holding this license.
So they're gonna, Massachusetts General Law allows a liquor license holder to use the inherent value of the license in order to access capital to achieve some purpose on the property of which the liquor license affiliated with. So in this situation, the paperwork shows that they're asking to, asking the board to approve them to use the license as collateral for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar commercial term loan in order to improve the, the property at four ninety Pittsfield Road, Lennox, so that's what that is. We're, we're required to have a public hearing and they're required to, to ask the board to do that.
And ABCC has to approve it after us.
After you are done with it, if you start the process and you're okay with it, Deanna takes all this and sends it to ABCC and they go through with a fine tooth comb, but from a cursory viewpoint that I made of this earlier today, everything looks pretty much straightforward. You'll see a lot of these, but attorney handle is.
We've had it once before in the last six years.
And it's not for us to judge the business practices, it's the ABCC's job to.
That's our, that's our failed city claim there.
Right.
ABCC's a book.
They've done this a hundred times.
Well, this, this is unusual, but we've done, yes, licenses.
I wasn't even sure, because Deanna was gone, she had set this up, we never really had a chance to talk about procedure, I was even in doubt that it needed a public hearing, but it does, I found the statute specifies it, which you would think it needed a public hearing.
I actually looked it up on Manstack Office, it does say it needs it, yeah.
Can't see them, glad you and I know.
Okay, I don't think this is a one breath, but we'll try. So, Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing and move to approve the request by Mazzio's Italian Deli LLC Doing Businesses Mazzio's Italian Deli, to amend their annual wine and malt package store license to include a pledge of license.